I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the February 24th regular meeting, the Marquette City Commission. Would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Your Honor, Commissioner Kimbenzie.
Here.
Commissioner Campana.
Here.
Commissioner Coyne.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Mayor Protam Stonehouse.
Here.
And Mayor Neme.
Here.
Thank you, City Clerk. Do we have any agenda changes? Does any Commissioner desire to add or delete or change anything on the agenda? Hearing none, what is your pleasure with the -- is there an approval for the agenda? Commissioner Kimbenzie?
Vote to approve the agenda as proposed.
Thank you. Any support? Commissioner Coyne? Seconded motion is moved by Commissioner Kimbenzie, seconded by Commissioner Coyne to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed say no. The motion passes unanimously. Announcements, we have our usual litany of vacancies on boards and commissions. We have about 27 openings now. We're losing a little ground. We will be appointing some tonight, but I again encourage citizens to volunteer for positions on boards and committees. They're available on our website. We have a nice, easy application you can fill out and save on the website. It's a PDF app and you can print it out or you can email it into the city. So we make it as easily as we can for you to apply. I have another announcement here from regarding the Arts and Culture Master Plan. The public survey for the City Arts and Culture Master Plan is now open. Servers are available on the city's website. That's www.mqtcty.org. Residents may also pick up a hard copy at the Treasures Office and the Senior Center, both located in City Hall, as well as at Lakeview Arena, the Arts and Culture Center located in the lower level of Peterway Public Library. The deadline to participate in the survey is March 7th. If you need further information, you can call the Arts and Culture Center at (228) 0472. And we encourage all citizens to participate in that survey. We need the information in preparation of our Arts and Culture Master Plan. Okay, I'm finished with the announcements. The next item on the agenda is a presentation, and we have a presentation on our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board by Chair Lynn Laxo.
Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Lynn Laxo. I'm currently the Chair of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. The report that I have for you this evening is very similar to last year, as the priorities and activities of recreation in Marquette have changed very little over the year, except that we have a few accomplishments to report. So let's start with the first slide. In the background, basically, we have gone through some scheduling changes. In order to make it easier for community participation in our meetings, we've changed our regular schedule to be held on Monday evenings at 6:00 PM in the Citizens Forum at Lakeview Arena. And we've been able to achieve quorum and hold meetings on our regular schedule quite successfully. We have nine total positions, three of which were currently vacant. And we also have excellent staff liaison in Carl. When he's not available, John Swenson. And so we've enjoyed a great relationship with the city staff. In the park system, there are seven brick-and-mortar type facilities, 20 parks, approximately 2,800 acres, nine baseball and softball fields, three soccer fields, 17 miles of paved trails, in addition to the NTN trails, non-paved, and the fit strip. And NTN continues their quest for ever more mileage out there. So our municipal trail system connects to an extensive network of trails outside the city as well. The purpose of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board is to guide the implementation of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan and its guidance and recommendations. And as an advisory board with appointed citizen members, we are expected to ensure that such recommendations are supported by the community and that they meet City Commission-approved policy goals. This is a very detailed slide and really hard to read right here. What you want to pay attention to is the orange-colored highlighted lines indicate those projects that are deemed of high priority on the master plan and that have already begun progress. In addition, there are yellow highlighted lines that indicate those projects that are already done. And if I may draw your attention to the eight or nine projects near the bottom of the list shaded in gray, these are all new entries to the five-year master plan that came through an amendment for the tourist park master plan that was completed last year and has been accepted by the state. So we're actually adding to our list as we go along, in addition to starting and completing other items. The next slide is the medium priority projects, which are either critical and have no funding or are a little bit longer term, some of which, again, you'll see from the color coding, have begun already. Some are done, and there is lots more left to do. We have added another eight or nine line items to this list as well in the priorities for the tourist park campground and the day-use facility. In 2013, our accomplishments included the completion of the tourist park land use master plan and amending the five-year recreation master plan with its acceptance by the Commission and by the state. We have developed recommendations for a park land use policy, which has been taken by the staff and incorporating feedback from a number of other city departments as well, and it's nearly finished. It will be encompassing of special events, smaller park area rentals, and the various uses that you can imagine for trying to make some sort of reservation for the use of city parkland. We are also continuing to discuss requirements for a year-round dog park and trying to determine where in the city such a park might be located. We have taken all of those prioritized lists, the spreadsheets that you saw on the prior pages, and when we added in all of the tourist park items from the new five-year plan, of course, everything had to be reprioritized. And we've worked with the city to determine what their capital grant funding application priorities should be. We also did decommissioned Sutter Field in tourist park, so one down. We have continued to experience challenges that any municipal department would face in the loss of funding. And some of the reasons for the loss of funding are listed here. We have a number of capital improvements on our plate, including adding the items to the five-year recreation master plan still pending. We hear occasional updates from the Presque Isle Committee on the Presque Isle Inclusive Playground and continue to have over $7 million in capital projects that we'd like to do over the next five years. From the participation standpoint, one of the challenges we're experiencing with the three resignations that we had, specifically, we lost a longtime youth hockey representative with a great deal of historical knowledge and representation from soccer. Among our goals for the upcoming year, we're going to continue to refine priorities for the actions in the master plan to support the development of policies with park land use, support the action plan for tourist park, continue working on locating and prioritizing a city dog park. While we haven't been directly involved with, but we will support regional recreation authority discussions, we do have a committee member that is our representative to the Sustainability at Hawk Committee and exciting prospects with the integration of Clark's Park into the master plan inventory. In terms of the issues, they match a good deal of our challenges. The funding of operation with park land use policy and ongoing facility use by non-residents will perennially be a topic of conversation. We continue to work towards promoting having policy and guidelines for proposed structures in parks, to have established guidelines with engineered plans, specifications, and requirements for universal access, and again, working on a dog park. Our areas of interest and the priorities that we maintain as we discuss issues are the preservation of public shoreline first and foremost, tourist park improvements, Hartwood Forest Land and Regional Recreation Authority, and the promotion of Marquette as a year-round destination with our programs, special events, facilities, and trails. And I'll entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Laxo. Before I go to questions, I'd just like to issue you an apology. You gave us a very fine presentation on PowerPoint, but our equipment didn't do it justice, and I apologize for that. We are in the process of redesigning, replacing our equipment, and it will be better in the future, but I owe you that apology, the audience, and the -- I don't know what it looked like to the TV audience. Hope it looked better than the audience here, so I issue you that apology. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Ryan?
You've listed a lot of priorities, and we've had a chance to see those in the past. What do you think the group really sees as the highest priorities going forward?
The guidance that we most recently discussed at our last meeting, in terms of if we're actually going to do something, we need funding. And so the priorities for seeking grant funding, in addition to those projects that have already had their grant applications prepared, include the tourist park day-use area, the preparation of sort of a day-use facility with restrooms, changing rooms, and so on, to facilitate the use of our new beach, which was completed last summer. In addition to that, on the campground side of tourist park, there are some badly needed universal access improvements to be made to the existing east and west facilities to add what they call family pods onto the existing restroom and shower facilities. These pods are a single room that accommodate an entire family being able to go in and help children or help those with different abilities needing assistance. And so it serves two purposes at once, in addition, providing two more showers to the campground area. It also provides disabled access. Those were the priorities that I believe were recommended for the Michigan DNR Trust Fund grant funding. And memory failing me, I don't know, Carl, if you would be able to add what the other two were.
Thank you, Your Honor. Some of the discussions that the Parks and Rec Advisory Board really -- the discussions that I heard was really trying to work towards the improvements with tourist park to make additional green space and availability for other larger special events or high-impact events, is what we're calling them now. What we have seen over the past few years is a tremendous amount of pressure on Matson Park with a lot of our high-impact events, and that's causing some maintenance issues with that facility, as well as taking that facility offline for the general public. And the Parks and Rec Advisory Board felt incumbent to be working towards alternative locations throughout the city so that we could accommodate these high-impact events in a quality environment. By pursuing, and the Commission will be seeing this yet this year, is grants to pursue, as the Chair has indicated, new restroom facilities, new pods within the campground. So really trying to accommodate larger events, making it more feasible to put these types of things on. You know, that seems to be a high priority. The other priority, which are things that we're going to continue to look at, is how can we make Matson Park sustainable as we move forward? Irrigation, being able to provide impervious or pervious surfaces but also can sustain some weight, and so we don't have the damage that we've had in the past. And so those two parks seem to be a high priority in terms of the grants that we're going to be pursuing and we're going to be bringing in front of the Commission as we move forward.
Well, I certainly concur with the focus on tourist park. You know, I think it's one of those areas that a lot of people take for granted. It's been here for so long, you know, and it's just there, and it really needs some updating, both for Marquette residents and for the people we can attract. You know, those who are looking for a wilderness experience don't want to be there, but a lot of people want more of an urban camping experience, and we've got something pretty special there. So I think that's -- but it does all come down to money, doesn't it? And, you know, the availability of grants really to make it happen are critically important.
Commissioner Coyne?
Well, thank you, Ms. Laxo. A very comprehensive update on what you've been up to. Thank you. One of the things to follow up on Commissioner Ryan's comments was, as an advisory committee, you need to advise us what your priorities are, which is what Don's question was. So we know, particularly when budget time comes around, in addition to just applying for grants, we need to put that in the budget mix and fight for those funds along with all the other funds competing with it. So in addition to the update, we need, I think, if you could, as a committee, advise us as these are our priorities, which we really need to work on. That would be very helpful. And that's basically, I think, the most important thing you can do, is advise us what you need. Okay? And that's on behalf of the city. So appreciate if you could have your committee kind of keep us up to date on that.
In addition to myself this evening, we're also represented by the Secretary on the Committee, Sarah Perre, and she and I, I'm sure, will be able to somehow collectively remember to take that up with the advisory board.
Good. Thank you.
Commissioner Kimbenzie?
Thank you. I feel like my fellow Commissioners have hit on the financial parts of this and the recommendations for budget time, but the other part I want to hit on is policy, and I think Carl Zuger hit on it, and that's one thing that we hear, is what's going on in Matson Park? There's a lot more going on there. How much is too much? You know, there's wear and tear, which creates a financial issue as far as how do we fix it and keep it looking good, as well as the residents. You know, do we have music concerts every weekend? Or, you know, what's the expectation there? So that's something I think all of us as Commissioners hear a little bit here and there about, but I would love to kind of hear what your committee has to say about, do we have a limit on how many permits we give out? Do we have a limit on how much time we allow events to take place? Closed events versus public events? I think these are all questions that I know I certainly would like direction from your committee on. We all heard what happened in Traverse City when I think the residents got tired of having music concerts and everything going on, where one resident actually went and tried to buy out the whole park for the summer. And we don't want that to happen, because I think there's a good balance. But that's one thing. How much is too much? Or, you know, what kind of policy should we be looking at? Is there a problem? Or the other thing I should say is, I think a lot of community members love the Bandshell out at Presque Isle. You know, is there a way that some of this could shift up there? And I think, Carl, you kind of hit on that a little bit, too, but it's nice to have everyone downtown right in the center of it, but what does that look like?
What you're describing actually has consumed a great number of our board meetings, and we've actually had some wonderful input from Hiawatha, for example, with regards to the use of the tourist park. And some of the ideas that were presented by the consultants that developed the master plan are being translated into potential for event-resistant elements to Matson Park that are proposed, and some of them are here in the master plan. The use, the frequency of the use, the duration of the use, the public versus private nature of the reservations have all been discussed at length, and the proposed land use policy is very nearly complete. There are some additional questions that were on the last round with relationship to some other departments. There were some answers needed from Public Works or Utilities or something like that. So it's very nearly ready to be revealed, and I would not want to preempt the hard work that staff has done in developing this policy. But in advising on it, we definitely talked about Matson Park has been busier in the last few years than ever before, and with some of the weather events that we had, the turf simply didn't have time to recover between events. And so a lot of that was being discussed, because it's a crown jewel park, front and center, but if we overuse it so that it's no longer attractive, it loses some of that value. So there is provision in the proposed land use policy for the number of major events or special events that can be held at Matson, with the hope that with the development that is proposed for the tourist park, some events might make use of that space instead.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Thank you. In a way, we've kind of created a monster with Matson Park, just what a great and wonderful facility it is. But, you know, that said, I would certainly hate to see and could not conceive of things like Seafood Festival or -- not Seafood, they renamed it, but certainly the Beer Fest, the Blues Fest, any of the major events that are there, desiring to leave that location because it has a tremendous enviance that other places certainly don't have. Tourist Place is nice, but isn't Matson Park? Anything we could create in any other site certainly would also not have the same draw that you have with Matson. So I'm a little less concerned with some of the events that are there, as long as we're able to manage those. But I would point out what happened in Traverse City was literally they had created a very small park downtown. It was the only piece of publicly-owned land in the city of Traverse City, and that was made into a park, and it was used four or five times a year, and people began to think it was too much, and literally somebody tried to rent the entire park. But what caused all of that to happen was decades and decades and decades of horrendously bad land use policy on the part of Traverse City, where they allowed all of their lake shore to become private. And thus, when people wanted to go to the water, they only had this very small place they could go to the water. And when you rented it, it meant, "I couldn't go." And that became really the genesis for the policy now that limits it, I think, to four times a year. City of Marquette, we own over 90% of our lake shore, and the one thing that all of us as citizens have, and visitors, too, is the ability to touch the water in a variety of ways, whether we choose to go swimming in it, jump off the rocks at Black Rocks or Presque Isle or further up the beach. And that takes a tremendous amount of pressure off of the desire, I think, of Matson Park. This is the only place. You know, there's so many other places where people have public relief at the water. So just so we bear that in mind. But thank you for the very good work that you're doing and for the wonderful presentation. I certainly second Commissioner Coyne's concern that when budget time comes, we need to see what your priorities are so we can try and figure out a way to make them work. But thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? Thank you, Mrs. Laxo. We appreciate the report.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is we have the recognition of two outgoing board members. If Mr. Suxey and Mr. Crady would meet me at the ceremonial podium. I have here for you, Mr. Suxey, is the certificate of appreciation for your service on the Board of Zoning Appeals. Actually, you're both Board of Zoning Appeals alumni, so here's a T-shirt, a city pin, and a certificate of our appreciation. Certainly, the time you've spent is certainly a benefit to the city, and we certainly appreciate it.
It was a pleasure.
Yeah, thank you. And Mr. Crady, the same board, Board of Zoning Appeals. You were Chair for, I think, a number of years.
Yes.
And I know that's a -- sometimes that's a thankless board if you have to make a decision that doesn't please the applicant for the variance, but hopefully, most times, you've been able to satisfy them and reach a resolution.
Yes.
And again, we certainly appreciate your service. Would either of you like to say a few words?
Jim, I said all my words last two weeks ago when I did the presentation.
Well, thank you. We appreciate this very much. It was indeed a pleasure to serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals, and I wish to continue my service to the community by looking for other avenues. I think it's important that people give back to the community in which they reside, and that certainly is my wish. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item on the agenda is appointments to boards and committees. We have three appointments. George Meister to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and Jim Clark to the Board of Review, Brett Baranek to the Planning Commission. Commissioners, what is your pleasure with this item? Commissioner Ryan?
I would move we approve the appointments as listed by the mayor. The Parks and Recreation Board term is ending on January 29, 2017. The Board of Review for a term ending February 1, 2017. The Planning Commission, Representative on the Board of Zoning Appeals, for a term ending 2/15, 2015.
Commissioner Ryan, is there a second to this motion? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Reynolds. Do you have anything further to say, Commissioner Ryan?
Just again, we're very pleased to have people either step forward for the first time or agree to step forward and serve on a new committee or in a new area, and it really makes the community go around, so it's critically important.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Reynolds, do you have anything to say?
Nothing further.
Okay. I'll call the question. It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Reynolds, to make the appointments as listed on the agenda. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. The motion passes unanimously. The next item is a reappointment. Sean Penglaze to Planning Commission for a term ending February 15, 2017. Commissioners, what is your pleasure? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I will motion to appoint individual name to position name for time named.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Commissioner Ryan?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse, anything further to?
Nothing further, again, other than our thanks for taking the reappointment.
Commissioner Ryan?
Nothing additional.
Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Stonehouse, seconded by Commissioner Ryan, to appoint Sean Penglaze to Planning Commission for a term ending February 15, 2017. All in favor of the motion, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed to the motion, say no. The motion passes unanimously. Now, we've come to the part of the meeting for public Now, we've come to the part of the meeting for public comment. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making public comments. Any citizens desiring to address the commission? Sir?
Right, yeah. That's our speaking podium. We have two different podiums.
My name is Jared Myers. I live at 1420 North McClellan. And, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Commission. And I just wanted to bring up, I'm sure you're all aware, of the legalized Marquette movement to decriminalize marijuana. And I would just respectfully request you to strongly consider putting that on your public agenda. That's all I have.
Thank you.
It's 685 Erie Avenue in Marquette Township.
And Dennis Lemington, 945 South Vandaboom Road. Mr. Mayor, I know you usually do this one at a time, but since it's both the same topic, we're both here to represent Marquette Township, would you mind if we both addressed the commission at the same time?
Sure. Would you like, would you need six minutes? Okay.
And first of all, I want to speak as Marquette West Rotary member. Commissioner Stonehouse, it's Harbor Fest, and it's going to be great this year. We have some really great plans. I'm here to give a little background. I watched the, your meeting where you discussed our...
February 10th.
February 10th meeting, that are rezoning, and I just wanted to give a little background. A lot's changed since then. You had a lot of December 10th information, and a lot changed. December 17th, I went to your Planning Commission meeting, got some excellent input from your Planning Commission, really appreciated it. We also had some comments, a really good discussion with the major, actually, the Forest, was the Forest Preserve District, major landholders, the DNR. They too gave us excellent suggestions, excellent input. So a lot has changed. As you see it going around, it's no longer Forest Preserve, it's now Forest Recreation. One of the main things that I took away from your Planning Commission was that we wanted to enhance and protect recreation, and some of the uses that we had disallowed were uses that would actually benefit that. This has been a long process. We've been working on this since two master plans ago. We got rid of a really silly little district called Scenic Resource, which allowed for things like staged train robberies. It was a very 1960s district. And we, it opened a discussion about the really special places that are in Marquette Township, and, you know, the best way to protect and to enhance them. So the first thing we did was to identify them. We have a map, our scenic cultural resources, natural scenic and cultural resources, is incorporated into our current master plan. The district that the Hartwood Forest falls into that, you know, which has its wonderful trail system, is part of that. So I know that we're not an agenda item tonight, but I want to let you know that if this becomes an agenda item, I would be happy to come back at any time and answer any questions. Tentatively, we have, well, hopefully, because we've moved this many times, but we have a public hearing scheduled for April 9th to move these districts forward. So turn it over to Dennis.
Thanks, Ellen. After watching the meeting, I just had a few comments, and I know that you were unfortunately using like 35 minutes of your time, very valuable time, and looking at old information because in your packet, you saw the things that went to your Planning Commission, but you hadn't seen any changes, like the updated nomograph that you have in your hands now, or what that map looks like. And some of the comments, I really want to point out, is that when you talked about, you know, the Forest Recreation District, and comments came out like taking of land through zoning, or spot zoning. And I want to make sure that we clear that up, that there was no attempt by Marquette Township to spot zone. In fact, it still has the same zoning it's had since you purchased the property. No zoning has ever changed in the Hartwood Forest land. These attempts have been well noted, and been worked on for several years by our Planning Commission. Many public meetings, our master plan that went out to the city to review when we were updating our master plan, all those things have been in there about trying to become more protective of those recreational assets. You'll note that the Hartwood Forest land and the potential change to a Forest Recreation zoning district is the same as Sugarloaf, Little Presque Isle, Wetmore's Landing, very similar recreational assets that we have in our community, that we all agree that we want to keep as recreational assets in perpetuity, much like that Carp River Valley through that Hartwood Forest land that the city owns within Marquette Township's borders. I think that we all agree, when the City Commission adopted the ad hoc committee's report and talked about what was going to be kept as recreational assets, we've always said all along, we share the same goals. You know, we'd attempted to purchase the property. We still would be interested if that, you know, became a reality, because our stated goal is to keep it as recreational property in perpetuity. But I was concerned when I heard those comments, and Commissioner Ryan, I will thank him for his comments about, do we really need to send a letter? I mean, they're just down the street. And I laughed, I told him before the meeting, when I'm shoveling the snow off my garage roof, I can see the city manager's house from my house. You know, I could probably hit it with a chip shot if I didn't shank it. But the point being is, we're neighbors, you know, and we really are here, pick up the phone and call us. Had we known that that was on your agenda, one of our Planning Commission members, or our Planning Commission Chair, Ellen, would have been happy to be here to answer those questions, to hopefully put some of those concerns at ease. You know, a lot of talk about, there's 80 uses that aren't going to be allowed there. That greatly changed after she had been to your Planning Commission and came back and brought it to our Planning Commission. Almost every recommendation, or if not all, that they made from the city Planning Commission, were adopted by our Planning Commission in the current version of that draft that's before you. So I really want to be here just to say, we're right there, guys. I mean, don't be afraid to reach out, call the office, call my cell. We'll come anytime, we'd be happy to attend any meeting. I think we're all in this together, and I just remember what it was like a few years back when we were in litigation, and when I jumped into the political arena. I do not want to see us go backwards. I think we get a lot farther ahead when we're working together. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lemington. I agree that, you know, that sometimes we have to work a little harder to be good neighbors, so we appreciate your comments, and appreciate the information. Okay, anyone else?
Hello, Mike Beck, 1005 Alaway, City Marquette here. Just wanted to make a couple of comments. I'm dealing with cooperation with other government agencies around the area, and the fact that I believe the City Commission is a little bit overdue in addressing the truck routes through the city of Marquette. October of 2013, you made a decision to table that for 90 days. I believe it's a month past that about now. But for a little further background history on that, in 2008, the realignment of Wright Street from Sugarloaf to the city limits was developed for a truck route. 2010, the city purchased the McClellan properties to develop it for a truck route. And I think at that time, in 2010, Commissioner Stonehouse said, "It's very important for the city of Marquette that we do this. It's the last piece of the puzzle." 2011, Rio Tinto announced they'd be using the existing truck routes through the city of Marquette. So I believe this has been a process that's been long coming for the city of Marquette. This extension, north-south, has been looked at for 40 years. So this predates any of our, most of ours, I would imagine, interaction with the government here. So this is something that's been long planned for Marquette County. I know it's a difficult decision to make. I know it's going to cause some fiscal burden for the city. But this is something that the city should be planning forward to, because it has been planning for this for decades. And I do know that it's not just me who's concerned about this truck route. It may not be the correct time to bring this up, but I just wanted to mention to the city that it has been a full month now past that 90-day period you set for yourselves to announce the truck route. So, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
Frank Jeffarito, 350 East Ridge, to speak on item eight. These are my opinions. February 18th, the Township Board revealed your ill-preparedness on the Hartwood item. The supervisor called your discussion entertaining and interesting. He'd have gladly sent a representative if he'd only asked. He also wondered why you'd want a utility easement, being that it would be serviced by the township, not the city. The Township has offered several times to purchase the 120 acres comprising their well field. Where was this in your discussion? Why did Ryan suggest they buy the land when they've offered to, at least those acres? To be fair, base the sale on the prorated cost of the original purchase plus interest and bond share, not on the subdivided figures as detailed February 10th. The supervisor further claimed the acreage is 567, not 467. The 100-acre discrepancy is comprised of beauty to die for, yet you fail to account for it. He continued, "This region's identity is about having these places to recreate. These areas are so sensitive that we have to preserve them." He's quote, "Taken aback by your surprise and your apparent representation of them doing something sneaky. This was above board, we had public hearings, it's not like we went out and bought the property in the middle of the night, like some other entities do," apparently alluding to your manner of business. He added, "The reason for your purchase was to preserve the land in the perpetuity and to assure it not be developed. It was your stated purpose, that's why residents are paying the millage," end quote. Doesn't that sound familiar from February 10th? Everyone's on the same page, except for you. Our own manager later said, "The land sits above the Township wellheads and is too rugged to develop. You made no mention of the wellhead. You only disclosed the aspects of the items that bolster your agenda. You either withheld the rest, or you're oblivious, like Ryan and Campenzi, pointing out the broad representation of the Hartwood Committee on neglecting to admit that the group was loaded. You're oddly selective about what parts of the truth you share." Stonehouse said, "It's important to maintain the current zoning so the city has the opportunity to properly plan the property. If the Township moves ahead with the rezoning, it will tie the hands of the city. Zoning changes at this point may even restrict access for utilities, which is critical to any future development," end quote. No one has rezoned the property. Your zoning was invalid. Your hands are tied legally, and they needed to be tied. We're already running infrastructure to ill-advised outline developments that aren't cost-effective, and Fed wants to repeat the mistake. There's no foreseeable reason to ever run utilities into the Hartwood interior." Coyne said, "No resident would want the property zoned out from under them. Neither did the Township. Crazy as this sounds, you scheduled a Township item without even letting them know, yet you accuse them of not conferring with you and your loaded ad hoc committee, which Ryan and Campenzi dared to lend one ounce of credibility. This is the epitome of hypocrisy."
Thank you, Mr. Barito. Any other citizens wishing to address the commission?
Good evening. You're in Malanquin, 8 Marquette Drive. On a more happier note, I thank the commission. When working with the Landfill Authority, we're looking forward to working with the city and everybody concerned with the recycling program. All the papers have been signed. We made some more things happen last week at our meeting, and looking forward to actually implementing the plan come the spring when the weather gets where we can actually start doing construction. And I'm glad that we actually had a sit-down meeting, no letter-writing campaign. We're close neighbors, as well as Township, so eyeball-to-eyeball communication is always greatly appreciated. On the other hand, if there's an issue that comes up between the Landfill Authority and the city of Marquette, please don't hesitate to contact us immediately, and we'll make sure that we'll work on any po-pies that may occur on that front for you. But we're all looking forward to having a successful recycling facility for all of the citizens in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lenkinen. Anyone else wishing to address the commission? Any other citizens wanting to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting and proceed to the consent agenda. Commissioners, what is your pleasure with our consent agenda?
Your Honor, I move the consent agenda be approved.
Okay. Is there support, Commissioner Coyne? Thank you. Anything further, Commissioner Ryan?
No, these are routine matters that can be approved in this manner.
Okay. Any additional comments? Commissioner Coyne?
No.
Okay. All in, it's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Coyne to approve the consent agenda, items A through O. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. The motion is passed unanimously. Proceeding on to new business, we have item number six, which is the Marina 2014 Annual Slip Rates. City Clerk, will you read the background item, please?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Background, the city of Marquette maintains two Grantonade Marina, Cinder Pond and Presque Isle. Each Marina facility was developed using state and federal funds that equate to 50 and 90% respectively. In 2011, the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Waterways Commission, MDNRWC, established a 10-step rate schedule. The Grantonade facilities were required to schedule rates which are approved by the MDNRWC. The steps offer greater flexibility when choosing rates to meet local financial obligations. This year, the MDNRWC issued the same rates as 2013. The city of Marquette Marina Fund is an enterprise account, i.e., established to be self-sustaining, that is funded through seasonal slip rental, transient slip rental, fuel sales, pump-out, and annual and daily launch fees. The, for a variety of reasons, the general fund had subsidized the Marina operations started in, starting in 1994, when the Cinder Pond Marina was commissioned. Rates historically have not incorporated planned maintenance and depreciation. City staff and the Harbor Advisory Committee, or HAC, held several discussions during 2011 regarding rate options. As a result, all parties recommended pursuing a long-range, multi-year strategy for addressing self-sustaining fund requirements, i.e., annual operating cost plus depreciation that gradually balances slip fees, slip fee increases with diminishing reliance on the general fund subsidies. The HAC recommended an increase of slip lease rates of 6% per year for five years. Staff later analyzed the recommendation and determined that a revenue-neutral or break-even point would require seven years. This is the fourth year of the planned increases. Other rates were reviewed, including transient rates, Founder's Landing Boardwalk, Mooring Field, winter storage, and annual launch daily slash seasonal permits. It is recommended Cinder Pond Marina establish transient rate D and apply transient rate C to Presque Isle Marina, no change to Founder's Landing mooring sites, increase winter storage rates consistent with the market study, and no changes recommended for launch permit fees. The following outlines the coordinated recommendation for the 2014 boating season. Seasonal slip rates, Cinder Pond and Presque Isle Marina, 6% increases from 2013. Mooring field rate and Founder's Landing Boardwalk rate, no increase. Transient rates, Cinder Pond transient rate D, Presque Isle transient rate C. Bulkhead seasonal Cinder Pond Marina rate, non-commercial, 50% Cinder Pond transient rate, no electric and water. 75% Cinder Pond rate with electric and water. Commercial, full set equals full Cinder Pond transient rate, pump-outs, no increases. Launch rate, daily or seasonal, no increase. Winter storage rates set to $1.10 per square foot. Fiscal effect, the continuation of the 6% annual increase, increases to slip rates will achieve a revenue-neutral or break-even sustainable balance to the Marina Fund by FY 2018. Recommendation, approve the recommendation to increase the 2014 seasonal slip rates by 6%. Transient slip D rate at Cinder Pond Marina and transient slip C rate at Presque Isle Marina. Increase winter storage to $1.10 per square foot, and make no change to other Marina rates as proposed. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, what is your pleasure with this item? Commissioner Ryan?
I move we approve the slip rental rates as recommended.
Is there a second for the motion? Commissioner Campana?
Support.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan, any further discussion?
Well, I don't have a boat or a slip, so I can speak my mind clearly, I guess. You know, as the clerk pointed out, this is, this is part of a seven-year plan, and it was agreed to. And it's a way to try to get us in balance, as it is, we subsidize the operation of our marinas. And, you know, that's, that's important. I mean, we're a Great Lakes city, so we want to have these facilities. But we also want to have rates that are appropriate and do give us an opportunity to maintain them as well. And the fact that there aren't throngs of people here saying, "You can't raise my rates," must mean that most of the people in the, most of the people in the, renting these slips are at least understanding of our need for this revenue. slips are at least understanding of our need for this revenue. So I believe it's important we move forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Coyne, any further? Commissioner Cam -- excuse me, Commissioner Campana?
Just looking at the rates, it looks like they're really no more expensive than perhaps owning a camp for a year. And I understand that, you know, we're probably not -- probably losing money on it, but Marquette being a port city, you almost have to have them. Because I haven't been on the commission very long, a question I have, and I know you probably discussed this before, how do these rates compare to a place like Esconaba or Munasee? Just somebody -- a quick comparison, ballpark?
Mr. Zucker, would you be able to enlighten us?
Yeah, we've done multiple studies on this, and I guess I would say that typically we're fairly comparable, although I would say to you that it's hard to get apples-to-apples comparison due to services provided, length of season. In many instances, these marinas are from -- they're open from Memorial Day to Labor Day, and in terms of providing services, we're open, as you know, from May 1 to November 1. So when we look at them and trying to sort of, you know, understand, you know, how close we are with other rates, it's, like I said, it's trying to not just look at the rate per se, but all the services that are included with that. So I think when you look at it in those terms, you know, we're very competitive.
Thank you, Mr. Zucker. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I need to remind the commission that because I do rent a slip from the City of Cinder Pond, I will recuse myself from the vote. But that said, I will have one item of discussion, which is just a question of Mrs. Mr. Zucker. Have we arranged for ice-breaking services yet? As I really suspect that one may maybe a little ambitious. I'm joking, but yes. Thank you.
Commissioner Coyne?
I also have to recuse myself because I'm half-owner of a boat, which I pay half the rental on, so I can't vote.
You only have to half-recuse yourself.
Okay, half-recuse myself, half a vote. But just a couple comments on the history of it. You know, this is -- these rates are significantly higher than they were a few years ago, if I'm not mistaken. And that was severe sticker shock, and there were a lot of people here complaining. But the reality is, we have to have, you know, the money to run it and to maintain it. And a perfect example of that is the Upper Harbor, which fell apart, and we didn't do it. So we've got to do this. And I think the people don't like it, but they realize this is what it's going to take to maintain a quality Marina there. And it is very comparable to other places, rate-wise, when you go to other places.
Thank you, Commissioner Coyne. Any other commissioners? Any comments? Nothing further? I'd just like to say, I'd like to thank the staff and the Harbor Advisory Committee and the voters for -- it is critical that we get the Marina at a more self-sustained basis. And probably four years, that I think it's been six or seven percent a year, it's anywhere from twenty-four to twenty-eight percent, and it's a significant chunk of change after -- and these rates are actually -- it's compounded, so eventually the marinas will be where they should be, and we're certainly well on the way, and I appreciate that. With no further discussion or comment, I'll call the question. It was moved by Commissioner Ryan, supported by Commissioner Campana to accept the recommendation, the proposed rates. Commissioner Stonehouse will be abstaining. Commissioner Coyne will be abstaining. All in favor, the motion say yes?
Yes. Yes.
Any opposed to the motion, say no? And we have -- motion is passed five to zero with two abstentions. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the City Commission Advisory Committee review of our subcommittees. City Clerk, would you read the background item on this?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, the City Commission convened a work session on February 6, 2014, to discuss commission-appointed authorities, boards, committees and commissions. At the work session, the commission identified a need to update the mission statements of the various entities that were established by the commission, as well as develop an assessment methodology to be used in evaluating progress towards their goals and missions. As a result, the commission requested to form a subcommittee of three commissioners to carry out these tasks. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, appoint three city commissioners to serve on an advisory committee review subcommittee for a one-year period ending February 24, 2014. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. On this item, Commissioners, I've asked Commissioner Stonehouse, Reynolds and Campana to serve on this committee. They've all agreed to do so without any objections from the commission. If you don't have any objections, I would request that you approve this, the appointment to the subcommittee. Commissioner Coyne?
I move we appoint -- we approve the appointments, as you mentioned, to the advisory subcommittee on committees.
Committee on committees. Commissioner Ryan?
I'll support the motion.
Okay, thank you. It's been -- any further discussion? Commissioner Coyne?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Ryan, anything further?
Yes, though we did have a work session on this subject and talked about it, and it was very interesting, and we find that there are committees that make a major contribution to the process. We heard from one tonight, but that may not always be the case, and in some cases, there's overlapping of responsibility and responsibilities aren't clear, so I think this is a good step forward, a good step going forward to look at these committees and see if they're organized in the best interest of the city.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. And, now, Commissioners, any other comments? Yes? Okay. No further comments, I'll call the question. It was moved by Commissioner Coyne, seconded by Commissioner Ryan to appoint Commissioner Mayor Protem Stonehouse, Commissioner Reynolds and Commissioner Campana to the Committee on Committees. All in favor, say yes?
Yes. Yes.
Any opposed, no? The motion is passed unanimously. City Clerk, would you -- well, the next item is Duke Life Point Market General Health System Negotiate -- Negotiation Subcommittee. Would you read the background material on this item, please?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Background, at the February 10, 2014 commission meeting, the commission requested to appoint three city commissioners to lead negotiations with Duke Life Point Market General Health System with the support of the city manager. Their term would be for one year, ending February 24, 2015. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, appoint three city commissioners to lead negotiations with Duke Life Point Market General Health System with the support of the city manager for a one-year period ending February 24, 2015. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, again, I've -- I would suggest that -- oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Verito. Perhaps you want to hear this before your comments?
Thank you, Jeff Verito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions, and it took you a whole minute to write down my name, so it would have been nice if you'd called me up. Of concern is which three members you hope to appoint to the subcommittee to lead negotiations on a matter that's certain to permanently impact our community, or in your words, on February 10, close the deal. It's recommended that Mr. Coyne not serve on this committee. He's already seated on the health group that's to monitor compliance as $300 million is spent on a new or current hospital. Knowing Mr. Coyne's manner of business, I fear alleged conflict of interest, being that a site is not yet selected, and that you've dedicated yourselves to, quote, "Do everything you can do to make the hospital successful." The concern is, at what cost? Yes, we all want a successful hospital, but some of us fear whether a yet-to-be-chosen location would serve the best public interest in terms of recreational sacrifice and patient convenience. It's feared that the health group and conspiracy with the subcommittee that you hope to establish will take your objective too far to do everything you can do to make the hospital successful, to the detriment of our green space, should they propose a currently scenic location. Let the public beware that based upon this commission's misjudgment on Hartwood to date, at least five, if not all, of you would ride along with whatever your subcommittee and the health group recommend. You've historically demonstrated this weakness on items that involve big-money, appellants or the recommendations of your loaded subcommittees. A prime example of how committees can lead us astray is your gross deviation from the original plan to develop only 356 acres. Appointing Mr. Coyne to the subcommittee only exacerbates this risk. To allow one man to place his irons in too many fires is a scary proposition, based on Mr. Coyne's history of riding on the political wind on most every item other than the truck route. The subcommittee's mandate calls for due diligence. Somehow, the aforementioned concerns and achieving due diligence don't go hand-in-hand. No doubt, due diligence is in the eyes of the beholder.
Thank you, Mr. Verito. Commissioners, what I'd like to do is appoint myself, Commissioner Ryan and Commissioner Cambenzi. If you have no objections, then I would entertain a motion to approve that. Commissioner Coyne?
I move we approve your recommendations to appoint them to the subcommittee negotiating with Duke Life Point.
Thank you. Is there a second for the motion? Commissioner Reynolds?
A second.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne, any further?
No, it would have been interesting if you'd made those appointments before Mr. Verito went after me, accusing me of having not much ethics. So thank you for not appointing me, and I wouldn't have served anyway, so.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Nothing further.
Okay. Any other Commissioners? Any comments? Commissioner Cambenzi?
Well, I'd just like to comment that this was talked about at our Friday morning Agenda Setting meeting that I was part of, and it was already determined at that point that because of Commissioner Coyne's knowledge, expertise and connections that I appreciate as a fellow commissioner, that he would probably not be appointed to this. But I would like to say that having someone on our commission with that expertise is nothing but an asset, and I think our community knows that, but I would just like to take the time to say that.
Thank you, Commissioner Cambenzi. Any further comment by any Commissioners? Seeing none, I'll call the question. It was moved by Commissioner Coyne, supported by Commissioner Reynolds, to appoint myself, Commissioner Ryan and Commissioner Cambenzi, to the Market General Duke Life Point Negotiation Subcommittee. All in favor of the motion, say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? The motion is passed unanimously. Thank you. Now, we've come to the -- we're done with our business portion of the agenda, and we're now at commission comments. We'll start with Commissioner Campana.
It was a good meeting tonight. Just, I really appreciated the Parks and Recs giving their presentation, looking at what they do. They're very widespread, they have a lot to do, and I think they're what makes Marquette be the very desirable place that it is. They got a big job in front of them, and I think they're doing a very good job, and we should appreciate what they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Campana. Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, several things. First of all, I appreciate the Marquette Township Supervisor and Chairman of their Planning Commission coming to our meeting tonight. Interesting to hear from them, and I really think it does set this model that we can talk to each other, you know? We don't have to exchange letters and, you know, deal at arm's length. You know, I think the best way to do it is to sit down and talk out any issues we have. And I really think, you know, Marquette City and Marquette Township do complement each other in many ways, so that's important. Also, this week, in a similar nature, we had a meeting to help us get more familiar with something called Smart Zones, and we had the city manager of Houghton, Eric Warre, and the just outgoing city manager, Scott McGinnis, and the Hancock city manager, Glenn Anderson, Marilyn Clark, the CEO of the Smart Zone. They were all kind enough to come down here and meet with us and give us a lot of information and a lot of insights into what this is all about. There are some pluses in this for them as well, but nevertheless, you know, I think it was great that they were here and spent some time at a special work session of our commission, and this is one of those projects that can hold some promise going forward, and I'm sure we'll talk more about that in the future. The -- I checked with the clerk before the meeting. This whole -- three of us will be completing our term on the commission this year. Commissioner -- Mayor Neme and Mayor Protem Stonehouse and I will be completing our terms. Kind of interesting, this means that over the course of three elections, this whole commission will have turned over. Of course, we have one old veteran that came back, so that, you know, it's not like he's a ripe newcomer, but, you know, I think it's something to think about. The other thing that's happened is that the dates for filing petitions have been moved up, and they're going to be on April 22nd this year. That's only two months away. The problem is, a lot of people say, "Well, the election's in November, you know, I don't have to think about that now." Well, if you're thinking about it, you've got two months to get your act together and get a petition turned in, which is a fairly easy thing to do, as long as you know about that deadline. And hopefully, we will have some people who are thinking about taking on this assignment in the next few years, because we do need three capable replacements. One other thing that just came to my mind tonight, I had a chance to speak with a university group this week and was talking about something called a sense of place, which is really kind of a term now about, we kind of create communities where people want to live, and they make their choices based on that. It's not like the old days when everybody went to find a job at a factory in Detroit or somewhere else, you know? Nowadays, a lot of people are making life decisions solely on where they want to live. And as I thought about that, and something triggered it tonight when Commissioner Stonehouse was talking, too, in that, you know, we've done a lot in the last 10 or 15 years to create that sense of place, things like bike trails and buying the Hartwood Forest and preserving bike trails and a lot of other things. But it struck me as I was meeting with this group that this really started 100 years ago or more. You know, it started when Peter Whiteman and some folks decided we'd preserve Prescott Isle. It decided when people, you know, decided that we would preserve the Lake Superior shoreline. And unlike Traverse City, which I think is a wonderful town, but as Commissioner Stonehouse pointed out, there is no beach for people. And in the city of Marquette, we own it all, so, you know, this sense of place is something that's been part of our history for a long time. And I just think that's a really positive thing, and hopefully, we can continue to move in that direction. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Coyne?
Well, I'll follow up on Commissioner Ryan's mention about running for city commission. I think the packets are ready. Is that not true right now?
Yes, Your Honor, we want to make an announcement for a little while longer.
Okay, well, I'm making an announcement. The packets are ready. All you need to do is go to see Mr. Blue at the clerk's office, pick up a packet. You need 25 signatures to run, and that's it. And I would hope that people who love this city will think about it.
Twenty-five registered voters?
Twenty-five, excuse me, 25 registered voters in the city of Marquette. That's important. And how long do you have to have lived in the city to run for a commission?
Just a year. I believe it's just a year, but I'd have to double-check the charter requirements.
One year, okay. Because I know the last round, a couple people were willing to run, but they hadn't lived here long enough, so that's important. The other important thing is, don't make any eye contact with any of the city commissioners, because we all will have packets to give you and give you the sales talk to why you should run, so. It's really important to have people who are committed to making this city a continued great place to live. And if you can't do it in this year, think of next year or the year after. One thought I had, an addition, Your Honor, is when you give recognizing outgoing members who are retiring from boards and committees, one of the people mentioned that he would like to serve, so when you give them the award and the T-shirts, you probably should give them an application for another committee, because these individuals, when they're termed out, many of them would like to serve again, and it's an invitation to them to serve, because these folks really do a great job. I would like to address Mr. Beck's comments. Thank you for bringing up the issue. We have been meeting with the operations manager for -- who's a vice president of Lundin for about two months. He lives in London and is the man who makes the deals, and we have been meeting probably two to three times a week with him, trying to negotiate a deal to make to keep the city financially whole. financially whole, and to keep the quality of life as much as we can, and to encourage a bypass which is not environmentally a disaster. And so, it's not that we're not doing this. We are, and it's been very difficult. I would think within the next month or two, we will have some kind of agreement, but it's not just that we're just saying, "Oh, well, ho-hum." This is, I'll bet you, anywhere from two to 10 hours a week effort to try to get this happening. So we are working on it. I appreciate the fact that we're a month overdue, but that's not because of inaction or laziness or not caring, it's just a difficult process. So I would hope you'd be a little more patient with us, and we can come up with a solution that doesn't basically turn this city into a gravel road truck route that's horrible. We're really trying to avoid that, so thank you for bringing it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coyne. Commissioner Cambenzi?
Oh, thank you. I'd like to thank the Parks and Rec Committee and Lynn Laxo also for her great presentation and all their hard work. And I'd also like to thank our Township Supervisor and Planning Commission member for being here tonight. I know I feel passionate about Hartwood. I feel like it certainly is controversial, but I think the best thing for the city to do is to kind of get back on track. We're about to hear from the Rec Authority. You know, I think I was, certainly was on the Planning Commission back in February of 2011, when they made the recommendation to label all the land in the township as surplus and move forward that way. I don't think the City Commission actually went ahead and took our recommendation, but I know, my personal feeling is that owning property as a municipality in any other jurisdiction is never easy. I think we have no control over the zoning. But with all that said, we have a significant financial investment in it, and our taxpayers are paying dearly for it every year. So I guess my recommendation, and I'll say this to the mayor and my fellow commissioners, is that having, having had them come here tonight, I would suggest, instead of sending a letter, perhaps we could schedule a meeting with them soon about the Hartwood, after the Rec Authority presents their findings to us, and before the zoning actually takes place, the rezoning in the township, just to have a meeting of the minds. I think we're overdue with that, I think it would be good. And just to Mr. Verito, I think, I know you're passionate about preserving all of the land. The city taxpayers are paying a half a million dollars a year for this property. And it is the developers, and it is the people who have houses, who come to City Hall, and they pay their taxes, and they do business in the city, that helps preserve the land that you like to walk through, and that you like the trees on. And I think that there needs to be a compromise, because it's not ideal to have all development or all preservation. To comment on the Smart Zone, again, I'm excited about this. I think what's going to come of it is a lot of collaboration between the Houghton Hancock area, and certainly Marquette, the universities. I know a lot of people in Marquette think, "Wow, if we had a Michigan Tech here," you know, "with all of their STEM programs, wouldn't that be great?" And I think tech, a lot of times, says, "Wow, we're great at STEM, but if only we could have some marketing people up here." So I think what we're going to see is a lot of collaboration, a lot of exchange of ideas, and some great business opportunities coming our way. My final note, we've got a great community event coming up at Kaufman Auditorium, the Kaufman Follies. Will take place this Wednesday. We've got a lot of local celebrities, actually. We've got the mayor, Commissioner Reynolds, myself, and co-host Don Ryan, that will be partaking in this, getting up for a good cause. Kaufman Auditorium sees about 40,000 spectators, participants that walk through the doors every year. It's used a lot, community groups and school groups, and we're looking to raise a little money to put back into the capital improvements, carpeting, the things that we don't want to use taxpayer dollars that go towards our K-12 educators for. So hoping to see everyone out there. $10 tickets available at NMU Easy Ticket Outlets, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Chief of Police will also be participating?
I forgot about our Chief of Police, yes. He will be, he will be Kenny Rogers, so please come see him, and we do have a Dolly Parton there that night, too.
Thank you, Commissioner Cambenzi. Commissioner Reynolds?
I just have two things. I would just like to thank Lynn Laxo for her presentation, and I do hope that they find a location for the dog park, because I would support a year-long dog park. Also, I would just like to echo Sarah with the Kaufman Follies. I will be there as Kelly Osbourne. And it's 10 bucks, great cause. I've talked about 20 people to go in, so you should join just as well.
Sorry. Commissioner Stonehouse?
That's a hard act to follow, and I'm not sure I can, but let me, let me try anyway. I was in Minneapolis this last weekend on some business, and, of course, they got hit with a storm. They got dumped on by about 12 inches of snow, and it was remarkable how badly they handle it, and the absolute inability of movement in that city, and the snowplows that figured out how to drive but not how to put the blade down. It's just absolutely staggering. I contrast that with Marquette, and how we pick a little snow up and it's not a big deal. You blow it off and you just keep on going, and I thank the city crews every time they're out there. And likewise, the fellows that are out there at DPW on thawing all the pipes, and I understand the criticality of that, and you see it every day, and these guys are just working their tails off for our citizens, and I hope they understand how much we all appreciate that. The, I do certainly appreciate seeing the Township Supervisor here and the Chair of the Planning Commission. Thank you very much for coming and explaining the rezoning, I think in certainly better detail than we previously had. Smart Zone coming, that is going to be terrific. That is absolutely going to be, I think, a game changer for the city of Marquette and for Northern Michigan University. It's going to take time to develop, but I think in time, all of us will just be looking at that as a normal way of proceeding. And when we couple that together with the next Michigan, I think we're going to have an unbeatable combination in the state. It's going to be terrific. My last comment, just to wander a little bit, because, you know, Commissioner Ryan talked about placemaking and the sense of place, and it really is a buzzword now that's going around a lot of places, makes sense, but a lot of communities. But I think what often is missed is that you really can't make a sense of place. You can't make a place. You either are a place, or you are not a place. And I would contrast that, again, to the way Commissioner Ryan explained it, and Commissioner Coyne, too, that Marquette has been a sense of place for a very long time, for a century and a half, if not longer, from when Peter White stomped the shore, this was a place. And it soon became a place that people wanted to be at for a whole variety of reasons. And the combination of the environment, the combination of what people could do, of the type of people that were settling here, all of that made it a place. And you can't go to some place, some town, and build something and say, "I have now made a place." You haven't. You made a structure. It doesn't mean anything to anybody, and you can't artificially give it presence. You can't artificially make it important. Sugarloaf Mountain is a place. People see it as a sense of place. Black Rocks, the Cove, all of Prescott Isle, the shore, along the beach, further back, I mean, those are places that people relate to and return to and like and enjoy. You don't make that. It's either there, or it's not. You can enhance it a bit if you do a few things around the edges, but you've got to realize how important emotionally all of that is to us. For those of you, however, that want to participate in improving a place, there's a visioning session going on this Thursday. It'll be at the Commons, 6:00 PM, and it is the placemakers that are here, from MML, that will be assisting the city in visioning what Barriga Avenue can be improved to be. So you're taking a place, Barriga Avenue, kind of a nifty thing, and seeing if we can't do a better job of connecting that to the waterfront, do a better job for the merchants there, and for all of our citizens and visitors. So if you want to participate in that visioning of place, 6:00 PM, Commons, this coming Thursday. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse. I'd just like to also echo the, my encouragement to attend the Follies on Wednesday. I will be playing Donald Trump, so. If you all behave, you'll, you'll, you'll make it through the entire Follies. Also, I'd like to, I had the pleasure of dropping the puck ceremoniously this weekend, two Royals games. The Royals, it's a phenomenal first-year team. This weekend, they didn't need to win at all. They already had taken the league, the league championship. Friday night, they lost, and I guess one person characterized it, they're a team who didn't need to win. The Ice Hogs from Bay City did need to win, and so they lost, but Saturday and Sunday, they redeemed themselves and beat them. So I think maybe sometime in the future, we can have this nice group of young men and feed them for the outstanding performance they've done this season. I'd like to also echo the need for people to apply for the city commission. If you're not ready to jump quite into the city commission yet, we have lots of boards and commissions that you can get your feet wet on a, perhaps a little less demanding schedule, and, but I would encourage people to either run for the commission or boards and commissions. Certainly, we have the need for them. Finally, I'd just like to mention tomorrow, the Assistant City Manager and I will be holding, well, not tomorrow, Wednesday, office hours at Market Senior High School. It's an ongoing cooperation with our Student Council, and so it'll give students and the Student Council members a chance to address this on whether issues the city they desire. So that's all I have. With that, we're adjourned.